Excuse me.
No.
Oh.
Do we know we work here?
And that is not her fault. That is my fault. I'm so sorry.
So we had communication error. That's fine.
Yes, I will take it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Secretary, better known as Mr. Jim Ten. This meeting is a public session of the Council Rock School Board of Directors. This meeting is being recorded by Council Rock School District and may be recorded by members of the audience. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will do roll call so that Mr. Klein can record it. Mrs. Sexton is away on family holiday. Dr. Foster.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks is also away on family holiday. Mrs. McCassey.
Here.
Mr. Graff.
Present.
Mr. Abramson.
Here.
Mr. Block.
Here.
Mr. Bylick is away on business. Mrs. Thomas is here. Okay, I'm going to do a public comment before we start our agenda. It's not on the agenda, but I want to give the public a chance to comment prior to our discussion. So if you have public comment, please approach the mic, state your name and the town that you're from. Please remember that this is an opportunity for the public to address the board. We ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience or watching this broadcast live on our TV when speaking. It's our goal to maintain a respectful environment so that members of our community have an equal opportunity to address the board. Please approach, Mr. McGill.
Steve McGill, Barwood Drive in Holland. I was kind of puzzled by the topic of this meeting tonight, but I do have some thoughts on it. And substance abuse is a very serious and continuing problem in our society, and it doesn't seem to be going in the right direction in a lot of ways. But within our policy coda, it is part of a bigger policy, which is student conduct. And one of the things that I think and I hear from time to time, it's not common, but it's not uncommon, is that the dress code in our schools is not enforced as well as it could be. And I know that there's discretion given to the building administrators and teachers, but I think that it's something that, you know, kind of falls into line with something that's called the broken windows theory. And if you're not familiar with it, you can Google that and you'll get the background on it. And it's basically what it says is that if you take care of small problems, it helps to prevent bigger problems. So I think that that's something that bears some scrutiny. I don't know if we keep any process statistics about the number of incidents of dress code violations, but I continue to hear that kids are coming to school or in school inappropriately dressed. And I think that that's something that, you know, if it's seen that those things aren't being enforced, then, you know, that can lead to bigger things. So that's what I had to say on that, and I have no idea where these things go on tonight, but good luck.
Thank you.
Amy McIntyre of Newtown. So I just want you all to get used to seeing me, and I just want to also share that I know tonight is a certain topic that's going to be discussed, not trying to hijack the meeting at all. But I do just want you to know that the community is committed to looking into how we can help keep Wrightstown Elementary School viable for the district. If you're here on behalf of the Wrightstown Elementary School effort, so there are three of us here tonight. And I do want to just deliver to you the additional comments that have been put on the petition since I met with you last, so that you can continue to see the feedback, since you won't be hearing from everyone at the meetings each time. So I'll hand those over. Thank you. And so it's been a real just kind of raising awareness effort initially, and I think you can expect in the future to get some more substantive feedback from us. But I want you to know that a community member kind of rallied the troops because there was a request from Wrightstown Elementary School for 2,500 tennis balls to preserve the new flooring. And I spoke with her before coming here, and she said she has zero doubt in her mind that that request will be completely fulfilled by the members of the community who are rallying behind the school. So I think that you can expect the community members behind Wrightstown to put our money where our mouth is and also to find ways to keep the school viable for the district ongoing. And that's really all I have to say. So, thanks.
Anyone else like to speak of public comment? Moving on with our agenda is discussion around policy 218.3. Mr. Klein.
As simply a precursor, I'll give Mr. McGill and others just some insight on why we're here tonight. Intermittently, over the past 10 years that I've been superintendent, we have revisited this policy for a number of reasons. It is the district statement on how we're going to deal with drug and alcohol issues in our school, controlled substances. And as an ancillary part of this, as Mr. McGill spoke, to larger coda of how we deal with misbehavior and most particularly some of the more pervasive issues we see in school. It is an acknowledged issue in our school district that one of the major transgressions we see among kids is alcohol use. We administer the Pennsylvania Youth Survey each year, called the PACE survey, to our kids, and consistently alcohol use and alcohol abuse comes up high in that survey as use issues. It's 43 percent among kids in our schools right now have reported one or more issues with alcohol. The good news for our school community is that that number and the number with respect to controlled substances, inhalants, heroin, marijuana, they have all been going down consistently over the past three years of the data we've received on PACE. That is absolutely a credit to the high schools, the work that we've done in drug and alcohol training, and to the Coalition for Healthy Youth, who has done a lot of work with us around these issues to sponsor good trainings, to do speakers, and to talk to our students and our staff about how we can be more proactive about this. But there's no question, as was said, that this is a major issue with us, and a major issue deserves or at least requires some kind of deterrent effect in schools. Policy 218.3 requires, for those members of the community who don't know, a 45-day expulsion for the first transgression in school or violation of this policy. That would be either under the influence in school, on school grounds or during a school event, or in possession of alcohol, drugs during that period of time. When I first became superintendent, this policy had a 45-school-day penalty and had no other alternatives other than the student went home and there was homebound instruction offered to the kids. Over that, the first period of time that I was working with our high school staff and with the board, we modified that policy to make it 45 calendar days, which was, while still onerous, a far less severe and significant issue than the 45-school-days. And we also put in place a program we call our Twilight School. It's a three-hour intervention at the end of the school day that allows for some modicum of counseling, as well as individualized and group work to make sure the kids who are going through the 45-days out-of-school expulsion have some effort, some opportunity to stay abreast with their schoolwork, so that the unintended consequences of this policy was not to put kids back into place in our schools and be irreparably behind in their classwork. This policy deserves conversation intermittently because it is a difficult policy. We have, and I invite the board to ask questions to members of our high school group, to our Director of Security, Mr. Rick, to Mr. Desko, who's the Director of Secondary and has a lot of background information about the elementary or the middle school and the high school program. I can speak for all of them in saying we continue to support both the policy and the way that it's written and the penalties that are placed in there. This year, we had 15 kids who were expelled for 45-days over the course of that, of a school year. That is fairly much in line with our colleague school districts, probably a little bit less than some that report. But I do want to say that one of the things that we know that is most extraordinary about this policy and the effect of that penalty is that we have no recidivism. That is, there is no kid that we know, that I know of over the past 10 years, who has had a second offense of this policy. And therefore, while in the first round of consequences, students are roughly the same as we have in colleague school districts around here, the second round is significantly different. It is a difficult penalty for kids, and we understand that students, particularly adolescents, make bad decisions at times. And we try to mitigate that, and we try to talk a lot, and there is a lot of effort made early in the school year by our school administrators to make sure that kids know these consequences, understand them. And seldom if ever do we approach a kid who is in front of us about one of these consequences where they would say to us, "We didn't know that it was 45-days." They sit in our assemblies, they get the handbook, they know that. As a matter of fundamental fairness, every kid knows that. Regrettably, that doesn't always weigh in on the decision-making that is done for that adolescent, and in that first offense, sometimes they'll come across us with an admitted drug or alcohol offense. The good news is that they don't create a second offense. The bad news is it's a 45-day out-of-school. Against school districts around us, Central Bucks and New Hoopsilbury are significantly less than we are, anywhere between five and 10. But the trend seems to be that more and more school districts are moving towards us, not away from us. So just in anecdotal evidence around us, we know that Penrich has moved their penalty to even a harsher penalty than us, and other school districts are moving towards a 40- or 45-day out-of-school expulsion for these periods. So it is disparate across the line. There are school districts that will do only five days, 10 days for a second offense, and there are school districts like us who will have 45-days for a first offense and one year for a second offense. I recognize it's an onerous policy. I recognize that it has a difficult impact on kids. Twilight School is built to try to lessen or mitigate that impact. And we're here tonight as a team to just answer questions from the board about how this policy has been affected and what other things the board would like to see in terms of changes and/or status quo for this policy.
Okay. Board comments or questions?
So about, so you mentioned that 15 children were expelled this year, and I think you implied that that's a pretty typical number in a year for us. We've had years with less, and we've had years with a little bit more. Interestingly, of those 15, I would say, in fact, I know, 13 of those 15 were expelled because of activity infractions, not school infractions. So two of those kids were expelled because they had a controlled substance in school. The remaining number of those kids either were under the influence or had some kind of evidence of alcohol or controlled substance during an after-school event, an on-school after-school event. Our kids' behavior when we're away from school is exemplary. I haven't seen anything, and Alan, you guys can correct me, in the past at least six years where we've gone to Princeton or to the city to do a prom and we've had any problem with kids. But when we've had our thon events, our winter dances, things like that, we often, not often, but we will see that kind of anomaly where we might see a child under the influence come in during that event, and we would have to take action at that point.
And the Twilight program is three hours at the end of the school day.
Correct.
So obviously, the parents are pretty significantly impacted.
Well, we provide transportation.
Okay. But I'm just saying that when a child is suspended, it's definitely on the radar of their parents in a big way.
I would say absolutely. That child then is at home for that period of time, and the parent is looking for activities, service, other things where that child can be active during the day, not sleeping and late. But we, the Twilight program is staffed by a full-time Council Rock staff member whose job is to coordinate assignments and information from the teachers. Our teachers are available to the child. Oftentimes, we'll do lab experiences, art labs, things like that on a Friday afternoon after school, and there is the counseling component.
I mean, it's got to be a huge wake-up call for a family when this happens. So if there is a, under the influence at school, this is going to impact the family in a big way and a huge conversation in the family. But has there been discussion about, you know, there's the rest of the day. It's not our responsibility to math out the day for the children, but, you know, whether it's community service or counseling, drug and alcohol counseling through other venues, and I don't know whether we would even have the right to force a child to take them or not. I don't know. That's the thing that I would be interested in ideas and thoughts around, whether it's now or in the future. Like, what are our responsibilities? What would we like to do with the rest of the day? Should we, shouldn't we? That kind of thing.
That would be a good conversation with the opportunity for virtual schooling and other things like that. It opens up other portals. And again, I think as a precursor to this conversation, you should know that I don't, I didn't think that tonight we were doing anything other than having the conversation, although if there were, there was a direction from the board with five members saying, "You should try this or this," we would go back to policy and begin to redraft the 218.3 and maybe also the accompanying 218 policy, which is the underlying discipline policy to make changes. But right now, we were just seeking input, and I wanted our folks to be here to answer questions. So to Dr. Foster's issue about, or question about Twilight and other kind of backfills for that time, do either of you, gentlemen, Mr. Funk or Mr. Gamble, and I should, just for the community, Al Funk, Principal of Council Rock High School South, Al Gamble, Assistant Principal of Council Rock High School North, Bill Rec, Director of our Security, these three gentlemen are not typically here for our board meetings, although Mr. Funk and Mr. Gamble often are. Actually, Mr. Rick is for other reasons. But if you have any input, pull the microphone up and feel free to add your thoughts.
I do know that on some occasions, there are parents that feel very strongly about the community service component, and I do know that there are some parents who have, you know, had their children involved in that.
If I can just speak to one other facet of this, Dr. Foster, I think is important. Any student that is referred through this, through policy 218.3, it's mandatory that that child enter into our CARES program. And that's a program that has a high incidence of success, revolves around CARES teams and interventions, and they also refer for a Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Assessment, correct? The other thing that's important about our policy, although it may be a little disparate depending on what happens and when the police are called, is that it's an automatic referral to our police departments, whether it's for underage drinking or other kinds of things. And oftentimes, we're presented with this unique factor in these evening events where we have to take pretty aggressive measures to find kids because we're worried about them leaving the school premises with keys and with cars.
That's the piece that I was going to add to. I mean, I'm not a law enforcement agent or an attorney in the business of education, but some of these matters are criminal, depending on their severity, and it's outside of our sphere of control, but there may be some juvenile probation, community service requirements that go along with decent practices.
Let me ask, but a few things happened here. One, it's something, when we talk about the policy, there is something I'd like us to think about. At the Senate level, in the state of Pennsylvania...
Sorry, I was comparing notes. I apologize. Go ahead.
We have no secretaries now. I'm just trying to make sure things get recorded.
That's fine. We can play back the tape.
This is on, it's being broadcast.
It's being broadcast.
Make sure that we get...
Sorry, but I want to mark...
I'm taking notes, too. But Ms. Rice can...
She can play back the tape.
Get a minute for that.
At the Senate, there is a bill, I don't know if it's passed, was Bill 1164. Doesn't apply to On Target, but the impetus of the bill is it's a good Samaritan law in the state of Pennsylvania which is being considered, typically more for drug overdoses. And the question there becomes, if two people are doing illicit drugs and one were to overdose, the second person who has not overdosed under the law could call the police to stay with the person to make sure that that person is attended to appropriately, and they are not then prosecuted for that incident. If they were selling drugs, they're prosecuted. If they were, you know, committing a crime, if they have a gun with them, if they're doing any number of other things, they will be prosecuted. But they will not be prosecuted for the drug offense because they reported, they took an action to save a life. So I just want to have some thought, as we look at the policy, to that, as a template or as a thought, becomes something where, you know, a child who reports another child who is in serious danger because they've taken something, they're kind of going their own way, I don't want the child to be left because the other kid says, "I don't want to get in trouble with it." So that's one thing I want to consider. I don't know how to administer it. That would be why you look at it from a policy perspective and from an administrative perspective view involving Mr. Gamble, Mr. Funk, Mrs. McCarthy, because there's a public good that comes from that, which is having a child not get worse in a serious situation. Regarding the Twilight School, that's one of the complaints I've had, heard, which is that the three hours a day is insufficient and it starts late in the day. But I think one of the things that has bothered me is that parents who have been in this unfortunate situation of dealing with their child, look to the school district and say, "Twilight School, that's all you're offering my kid? What did I do with him until then? Well, we're not a babysitting service." And so in any event, these are children who, by the way, are also typically of an age to drive, or frequently an age to drive. And if they have an auto accident, or they get points on their license, they pay a fine, or they pay for the repairs of the car, or any number of, and if they go to criminal or, you know, summary offense or misdemeanor offense, there are fines. We're not instituting any fines, and it's not within our realm. But having said that, if a parent were concerned about that and wanted to hire a tutor for four hours a day to tutor their child because their child has been expelled for a behavior which is inappropriate to school, and that parent paid $120 a day, $30 an hour to that tutor, yes, it's $500 a week. And for 45-days, 45 calendar days, it's six weeks. And at six weeks, at 300, whatever number I came to before, 500 bucks, it's $3,000. It's unfortunate, but it's not the school district's obligation to provide babysitting service. The four hours a day that someone could buy for tutoring, most of the tutors, our school, our teachers, they put a lot of effort into getting these kids and keeping these kids current as it is, and the three hours of Twilight and with phone calls and getting them the assignments and reviewing the assignments, getting the writing, reading the writing. They would coordinate as well, I'm sure, with a tutor. So I want to be careful because we have built into this system now that the first thing we tell these parents is, "Rely on Twilight, send your kid to Twilight." And I think we have sent the wrong impression. Like someone climbing rocks and wearing a belt or ropes to protect them, the ropes are there to protect them from falling, just like Twilight is there to protect the kids from falling through. It's not there, you don't climb mountains on the ropes, you climb them on the mountain, on the rocks. We need our kids to be working, the Twilight is protection, it's not the solution. Lastly, again, something, it's not On Target here, but I would like an update on it. And I hope that we never get to this, but you never know, given the topic we're talking about. In the state of New Jersey, first responders are allowed to respond with a product called Narcan when dealing with someone who has taken an opiate or a potential opiate overdose. What Narcan does is it blocks the opiate and often will restore someone temporarily to breathing and to heartbeat, where an opiate overdose, which would be a morphine, a heroin, any number of products, would otherwise produce a slowing in those processes and might result in death. In New Jersey, first responders are allowed to use that. I don't think that law has passed in Pennsylvania yet, and that's currently an issue for our police department. But I would ask through Mark, through our nurses, to find out what the status is, and if we have any standing orders or can have a standing order for the nurses to have the, I think it's naltocaine, its trademark name is Narcan. It is really one of those no-negative issues. The paramedics, when encountering somebody who is non-responsive, load it onboard immediately. It's actually administered by nasal, by nasal spray. Not that we want to be doing that, but if we should find a child who is non-responsive and we don't know what's going on, if there is no downside to it, I'd like to think that our nurses could do something in the interim. So that's forward. Al, could you help me understand, with a 45-day expulsion, a child who is, help me understand what the screening process is on the topic of drugs and whatnot around children at sports and co-curricular activities? If we have something which is a more strenuous test, and if an expulsion, 45-day expulsion has other repercussions in a sporting, participating in sports or co-curricular?
So during the 45-day period, that the student is excluded from the school community, they're also excluded from participating in any co-curricular, extracurricular activities. For example, if a student were to attend the senior trip to Florida and it just happened to correspond with a 45-day infraction, they would not be permitted to attend that trip. Am I answering your question or not?
You are, but my question is, do we have a different screening process? Is it, for athletes and some co-curricular, there's often a sign-up or some commitment that is signed by the athlete or the participant, which may hold them to a higher or to a more rigorous code of conduct?
Code of conduct. So for our student athletes, whether or not there's a separate threshold code of conduct? And I don't know if that's something that we have kind of, that's really uniformly consistent. I think that's more by the particular coach of that sport as to what the expectations are that they kind of outline prior to the season beginning about if there is an infraction. Obviously, you're not going to be able to participate in the practices or the contests, but when you return to the athletic team, will there be further consequences? We've kind of left that up to the coaches.
Also, Jerry, were you asking a question? I don't know. Do we screen for steroid stimulants, that type of thing? Would we if we thought we had a reason to?
I think if we thought we had a reason to, I think there would be a conversation with the parents, and there would be a strong recommendation that they visit the pediatrician and conduct that.
Is there prohibition to that?
I'm happy to hear that this district's policy is that way, because I don't think it's constitutional to randomly test even student athletes in Pennsylvania. In other states, it is, but in Pennsylvania, the courts have held that you can't just randomly drug test even student athletes as a prerequisite for participation in extracurricular activities. A school has to have reasonable, individualized suspicion, so I'm pleased to hear that.
So consistent with that, then, would it be unreasonable to think about a breathalyzer at major events for everybody coming in a prom, as an example? Has that been thought about? Is that prohibited?
Well, you made a jump there. No. You made a jump because you said, you said "everyone." And his comments, I want to first address the issue about if you have a suspicion about a specific person because of behavior, go down that path, and then I'll back up to the other one.
Yeah. I think that these are very close legal issues. I think that if a school district, I would be more comfortable with a policy that said if a school administrator has some reasonable suspicion that a student is under the influence, that the district can then administer a breathalyzer. And if the student refuses to submit to a breathalyzer test at that point, I think the district would be safe in reaching a conclusion as to what that refusal meant, as happens on the roadways if someone has pulled over and refuses a breathalyzer.
However, the difference is that driving in the state of Pennsylvania is a privilege, education in Pennsylvania is a right.
Going to the prom isn't.
I understand, but his question, so then, because it's a conversation. So if you're right, if you're doing something which is by privilege, but if you show up to school and someone believes you are under the influence, and how would you prohibit that person from participating in a future event because they refused while attending public school, which is a right in the state of Pennsylvania, to take a breathalyzer?
Well, the thing I would say, and maybe we're talking past each other a bit. I think it's clear that the school can administer a breathalyzer to a student for whom they have a reasonable suspicion, that that student is under the influence of a controlled substance. Now, to just uniformly breathalize, breath test all students who are entering an event, I'm not sure that that's constitutional, and I would have to look at the cases. But that kind of a test is more intrusive and more invasive than, for instance, having a student walk through a metal detector, because you're actually essentially testing an individual's bodily fluids at that point, which courts have held they have a reasonable expectation of privacy in. You can have them walk through a metal detector because that's less intrusive. So on first blush, what I would say is, if an administrator has a reasonable suspicion that a student is under the influence, I think they can legitimately, lawfully administer a breathalyzer test.
Does a child need to submit to it?
To consent to it?
Yeah. First of all, can a child consent to it?
Right.
Can a fourteen-year-old consent? And second of all, are they, and can they refuse? If they consent, they can refuse.
Well, a student can, a fourteen-year-old student can consent to any kind of search. So for instance, if a, typically, the issue... So for instance, if a, typically, the issue for searches under the Fourth Amendment within the context of schools, is, the issue is a balancing test. You take the degree of the risk, and you balance it with the nature of the search. So if a school district has a suspicion that a student is hiding a bomb that's going to hurt people,
Agreed.
The degree to which they can search that student is much higher than if they think that student is merely in possession of some illicit Advil or something against school policy. So a search of a student who might be hiding a bomb might entitle the district to do a strip search, or have a student remove an outer layer of clothing, where that search would not be justified if the suspicion was that they had some Advil that they weren't supposed to have. So, so all of these questions really relate to how significant is the degree of risk, and how intrusive is the proposed search? And I think, when you're talking about breath testing every student who comes in the door to a school dance, that's a pretty intrusive search for a relatively, for a relatively remote risk. Whereas if you're doing, administering a breathalyzer to a particular student who's slurring his words, or is falling down, or is in some kind of trouble, I think that presents a higher degree of risk, which justifies that more intrusive search. So that was a convoluted explanation, but I think that's pretty accurate.
Well, I think also, as a practical matter, you couldn't do, every student showing up.
Yeah, let me just insert for one second. First of all, the practicalities of doing a breathalyzer to nine hundred kids going to a senior prom are just about impossible. But the second thing I want to just emphasize, and I think this is key, we work with outstanding kids. We have four thousand kids in our two high schools. The fifteen that represent that exclusion, even those fifteen, our group would say, they're great kids. They just made a bad mistake on an evening where they were coming to at the end of something, and it was, it was just an adolescent bad mistake. I don't indict those kids, I think they all understood they made a mistake. The issue for us is, I want to continue, as I think our administrative team is, to default to the fact that our kids, ninety-nine percent of the time behave well. If we have suspicion, reasonable suspicion, that a kid is under the influence by their gait, by the way that they're talking, by someone else saying, I knew they were at a party, then we want to take action against them. And I know the one thing that we have talked about is whether we want to do breathalyzers, but right now, my position is, I don't want our team or our administrative team to be in charge of breathalizing kids. That's a police
So we only have that if we have an officer in school during the study?
Right, so if we would need to, and we had a child, we denied being under the influence, and we wanted to check for their own safety as well as the suspicion that we had, we would call the police. The consequences of that, although we report anyway, are sort of dire. Number one, the police issue, I think Rob will tell you, their ability to take that breathalyzer is a little different than ours. And number two, I think that is a situation where we want the parents there before we ultimately administer the breathalyzer. But one way or another, that gives you the definitive piece of whether there is alcohol in the system or not at the time.
It's probably important to note, too, that in the vast majority of cases, the students have an admission that they consumed alcohol.
Yeah.
But our trouble is, they have an admission at night,
Right.
and then they come back later and say, oh, no, that's not what I was saying.
Correct.
And
In very few cases, though. I would say that the history of my ten years together is, almost every time we've had a kid like that, they've eventually said, yeah, I did. There are one or two anomalies in that, and one or two issues where we would not receive the admission. But again, it's a reflection on our kids. They turn to us and say, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Funk, or Mr. Gamble, I was drinking tonight. And we call the parents, and that's why the majority of what we deal with on these issues come through expulsion waivers, not through formal hearings.
And I agree that we have great kids, but I think it's a little naive to believe that a number of fifteen represents what might be truly happening out there. Personally, for me, I'm happy, and I think we have to have a really, really strong deterrent. I don't think it's necessarily bad that we've got the most aggressive out there, so to criticize, or to take criticism that we've got, you know, the strongest, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing. You know, for me, we're about educating the kids both academically and hopefully in life lessons. And I think it's about the message that we deliver. So my question would be kind of similar to what Dr. Foster was asking, is, is how can we have a massive deterrent that gets the kids' attention, creates the kind of, you know, limitation of secondary instances that we see, but keeps the kids in the classroom? Are there things that we can do, like community service, like detention for forty-five days, like Saturday detention? I'm throwing out a lot of things that may or may not be reasonable. You know, can we pull them out of athletics for the semester, and if they're halfway through, pull them out for the next season? Things that are really punitive, but stay focused on giving them the education, and almost taking it up a notch to get them more focused there, that will deliver the same kind of message, the same kind of deterrent, but not create some of the issues that you might see with kids that are outside of school that might only get three hours, that might create issues with the parents. You know, are there better ways to do it? And for those kids that get in trouble, they largely are good kids. And, you know, can we do something to avoid creating something bad from a good kid versus some of the kids that might fall into this, that, you know, weren't good kids, that we wouldn't be able to help anyway? So that would be my challenge back to the administration and staff, is, is there a way to create that deterrent and deliver the message, and drive the right behaviors without taking the kids out of the class?
I think, too,
I don't know the answer, it's a challenge.
If I could just add to that, and I guess along the lines of what Mr. Grubbe was saying, I think the hard part for me is, this policy impacts families differently. So it is, and certainly based on the age of your child. But if you have two working parents, one of the complaints that I heard, not as a result of this issue, but several years ago, is if you have graduating seniors, and it's February, and there's eight of them, they're sleeping until eleven, they're going out to breakfast or lunch on their way to Twilight. Now, that's my responsibility as a parent, as to whether my kid has access to a car, or what they do with that time. But, you know, if you're at home, you have some different degree or some greater ability to try and manage that time. If you're not at home, and you have two working parents that are an hour away, your ability to manage that, I think, is a little bit more of a challenge. I don't know along those lines, if there is some way to offer two sort of options in that. If you keep your forty-five days, you have the option of, as a parent, they sign off, they sign the waiver, the option of, because parents want to teach their kids a different message as well. I think we've seen in some of these situations that there are parents that absolutely disagree with this policy, but you do have parents that say, yep, thank you, best thing that ever happened, and we're very grateful for it. I don't know how you find the balance, not just to please the parents, I don't want to punish parents because a kid makes a bad choice. That, to me, is very much of a struggle.
I think also what would be interesting to find out, is I asked Mr. Klein to pull some of that history that you asked about before, so hopefully over the next few weeks, see what kind of universe are we really talking about that this impacts?
Well, just so we're also clear, the, you know, if you take off all barriers to thought and think, Twilight School is so named because it runs after the alternative school. So the Sloan School runs during the day, it dismisses, and then the Twilight people show up, and, not the movie, the students. And I guess the question really becomes, you know, you could, in a perfect world with more space, I'm just, you know, think it through, and then maybe it comes. You could run Twilight School at nine o'clock in the morning, from nine to noon, if we had a place which would allow the segregation of these students from other students. So the one defect, which is a matter of time, is an artifact of the space we're using. You know, as we're looking at our capital planning, that might be, if, you know, I'm not a huge proponent of the Twilight School. I think for the reason that I spoke of before, that it's a safety net, not a means to do it. But the board seems to like Twilight School, I understand that. Maybe it's the modality changes as we look at our buildings and where we're putting people. Maybe that's a modality change that says, you know what, if you ran Twilight School, if you had a staff member to do it, you ran it, and maybe it was across the hall for Twilight School here at Chancellor Street, because there are no other students in Chancellor Street from nine to twelve. Maybe that makes a difference, and satisfies that sleeping in late in the breakfast
See, my other thing, too, Jerry, if my child gets in trouble, walks out the door one day, nobody believes, or certainly hopes, that that's going to be the end result of Hollis Rockathon. Got that. But if my child walks out the door, and you're not getting a tutor for thirty dollars. It's been a while, I think, since you've had a tutor. Tutors are sixty dollars an hour.
Well, I figure we suspend kids in pairs.
So that's the other, I mean, if somebody, if there is suddenly a three thousand dollar problem in my path that I don't expect, I don't know that I can do it. So that's the other, and I think the reason, one of the big reasons that Twilight is successful, and there are people that would say that it is not, is because in my experience of knowing some of the families, it is out of teachers that these kids are working with on their own time. I mean, and we're very fortunate for them. These teachers are working with parents, working with kids, working with tutors. And I don't know the degree to which they have to, but I think they do more than certainly would be required.
Jerry, a quick question, and for the record, some of the feedback that I've gotten is that we could make Twilight more effective, both while in place and transitioning back. But question, you said segregated, which was interesting to me. So there's a question, if the child does something, why from a school, an academic perspective, would you want, I'm not saying that you do, but would you want to segregate them from the population?
Well, this is, the nature, the nature of an expulsion is an exclusion, that the child is not in among the school. When you look at the nature of the many things that are being, a child is being excluded for, some of them have behaviors that need to be rectified before the child comes back. So you want them segregated, in essence, because their behavior needs to come back in line, at least this is my perspective, it needs to come back in line. I don't believe it is wholly punitive. I mean, you know, the age-old discussion about prisons is, you know, are they, you know, prison, prison without counseling is just penalty.
That's kind of right.
And I don't know that we're looking, you know, I don't think we try and get into the penalty phase, you know, but I think that there's some hope that the problem will be ameliorated in forty-five days. But that's why you segregate. I mean, it's really a question more for you guys than anybody.
If I could just speak to the Twilight program just for a second. I know that, and again, I'm not sure of the date on this, but we had a study that was done a few years ago when we first instituted Twilight. And the study basically said that the kids that went through the program basically finished almost, you know, the same, the grades were almost the same. And so I went back this year, and I looked at, you know, some students that were in Twilight this past, this past year. And out of, you know, there were seven classes, seven courses for each child, so seven times seven, forty-nine grades. I looked at their first two marking period grades, and then I looked at their final grade. Okay, so that's how I determined this data.
Right.
So looking at their first two marking periods, and looking at their final grade, there were four grades, so four grades out of forty-nine, so four classes out of forty-nine, there was a decline. But there were two grades that also increased.
Right.
So for the most part, if you're looking at just that one thing, I certainly know the emotional component, and some of those other components that are so important to kids, that I can't imagine.
Yeah.
But in terms of their academic success, I think that the Twilight program has done a successful job, and, you know, looking at that.
Do we know who had tutors and who did not?
No, I do not know.
And were they thirty or sixty-dollar tutors?
I'm interested to hear your views on the exclusion piece, your thoughts on
Andy, just pull your microphone down.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm interested to hear on the exclusion piece, and your thoughts on, you know, punitive deterrent that's not necessarily school day?
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we certainly struggle with, it's a dilemma. I mean, what I'm listening, guessing, going off a point, too. I think a lot of things almost seem counterintuitive. For example, if you were to, else, we'll suspend a student for frequent absences, that just doesn't seem right. Something that we do on occasion. I think it's more about removal from the school community for a period of time, based on the severity of the infraction. But again, we don't want to be punitive, we're more into restorative practices. That's why I think this Twilight program, in terms of maintaining academic continuity, we've done a decent job. Not all times are the grades going to increase. It's hard to replicate certain things like labs, and word languages, and whatnot. I think it's made a little bit easier due to the electronic age with the websites and whatnot. I think we've done a decent job with that. I think we're also talking about, again, rather infrequent infractions, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
Like, when I looked at data, back five years, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, we had three exclusions itself. Then we had eleven, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. We had six, two thousand eleven, twelve. Three, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. And we had six last year. So, and, yeah, North is about the same as
And that was all, was that just the substance piece, or was that everything included?
These were drug and alcohol, forty-five day fractions. So North was eight in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, nine in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, one in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, and I think you had eight to eleven this year.
The other thing that's important about that is, they don't occur as isolates, at least the majority of them don't. They come in clusters. So if you're going to see one drug and alcohol offense, normally alcohol offense had one of these thon or winter balls, you're going to see three or four, because those kids didn't sit by themselves in a car and have a little to drink. There was usually three or four, there was a party beforehand. So that's the interesting part about that, is once we see one kid who was under the influence, and in some cases, significantly under the influence, there's usually a cascade of three, four, or more. And our job then is to try to struggle through the dance to find those kids, make sure they're not leaving, make sure they're not in cars, things like that.
Yeah, and I guess my piece is, that's, you know, how many more groups are there that we're not getting to, and those are typically the good kids.
You know, I want to be really clear about that, because I hear that from parents all the time, and I will absolutely rebut that presumption. I don't believe, the kids that go to our parties, those of you that have parents that are not our parties, our dances and that, they know, bad, bad choice of word. They run the gauntlet. I mean, they go through, they'll pass Mr. Rick, they'll pass Mr. Funk, they'll pass Mr. Gamble, we don't let the water bottles in. Am I absolutely certain that someone doesn't open a side door and bring in a water bottle? Not absolutely, but we're pretty careful about that. I hear that from parents all the time, well, you're not catching the vast majority of them. I would absolutely refute that. We do. If there's a kid under the influence, we have enough adult chaperones in these dances, and enough administrators, and people that are there, that we see them. And if they're acting in a way that suggests they're under the influence, we bring them in, and we talk to them. Now, when that happens, it creates a ripple effect in our dances, and there may be two or three kids that manage to get out of that side door before we can get to there. Absolutely agree with that. But the sense that somehow there's a pervasive alcohol abuse issue in these dances, I don't think is true at all.
So I guess the point I was trying to make is that it might not be pervasive, but if there's another group, it tends to be the kid you would, you know, they're in groups, it's probably the one time they did it, they made a bad decision, they get caught. How do we handle that in a way that
But let's back up to that.
Well, hang on, but there's kids who do it by themselves, that might be a bigger risk, a bigger problem than removal, or a different type. And I'm not suggesting we have different sizes, I mean, I think we have to
Yeah, I mean, I Just to add one thing, having recently been through six years of high school, the kids who don't come to the dances, because they know the penalty of being on school property. So the event that happened during my six years of tenure, the child who held the party, who didn't go to the dance. The other quote-unquote "good" kids, which might be a slightly overused term, Mr. Klein, but, you know, okay, they made a bad choice, but they went on school property. They went on school property. And I think the forty-five days is a huge deterrent. I think it's a huge deterrent. Every kid in that school knows. Every single kid in that school knows that's what happens. You get one of those events, you get ten kids out, everybody from ninth to twelfth grade knows. That's where you go six, you catch six, then you get three, you get a little bad year, and then you get a six, and then you get a three, and then you get an eleven. It's every two years, the kids have to learn. But I, I just want to say, I think it's pervasive in the community. I don't think they're coming to school.
I would be remiss, because she's not here tonight, so I will make Patty's argument. We don't always argue with each other, sometimes we agree. Patty's argument is
Mostly you agree lately.
Actually, true. Patty's argument is, and there's a great deal of truth in it, that the incidents that we catch, it's not the kid's first time, both for this, for marijuana, for drugs. We don't, you know, some of the kids, you're right, some of the kids we're going to catch, it was the first time, they say, it's the first time I ever did this, you're right. But for many of the kids, I think that it just happens that, and I agree with Patty on this, that it has become something that has become a bit of a norm for these, some children some children, to use alcohol, or to use this, or that, or the other thing, and they slip up and they come to school, and oftentimes, it's the best thing that's happened to them, because now they got caught, because it was just happening before and nobody noticed it. So, I don't disagree with the notion that Patty puts forward frequently, that says, we're not, we're not catching, you know, many of the kids we get, when they talk to them, they say, it's the first time I ever, because nobody ever says, oh, yeah, I'm drunk every Thursday night or every Friday night, but a number of the kids could potentially be, and we catch them one time and it puts a, a good, it's a good thing for them. Sounds terrible, but it's a good thing for them to get caught.
And you raise an interesting point, because there's a dichotomy of responsibilities here. Our job is to make sure that when kids come to school, they're not under the influence. We certainly know that when they're not in school, we have a pervasive alcohol problem, at least forty-six percent of them on the PACE survey suggests that they've had one or more drinks in their four years at high school. So, we're, we're not blind to that, and we're doing the best, we can do more. I mean, I see Mrs. Moskowitz in the back, and she is a wonderful resource, and we're trying to do more.
Excellent, there she is.
Debbie Moskowitz is the, is the chair, the driver of the Coalition for Healthy Youth, and Deb, in concert with Council Rock, has done some great work in terms of getting parent meetings together, the speaker series in consult, in collaboration with Council Rock Education Foundation was a wonderful experience last year, and we had some great turnout and great folks. So, we, we, the problem that we have, to the point that you talked about athletics, is we have drawn that dichotomy fairly strongly and fairly straightforwardly. We're not going to intrude into a Saturday night party that's not ours, we're not going to make an athlete who might have had a drink on a Saturday night and comes back to a coach hearsay, miss the next game. There, those issues are too hard for us to look at, and number, and the second reason is, we have enough to deal with during the eight, you know, seven-thirty to six-thirty sometimes, or eleven, that we have our kids in school. What we want to do, and what we want to try to say to our community is, when kids come to school, from seven-thirty to two-thirty, and then thereafter, we are doing everything we can to make sure that they are not under the influence, that they are not making dangerous decisions, and that we spend a lot of time talking to them about that, and when a kid is, runs afoul of that policy, there's a penalty to it.
I just wanted to loop back to something really quickly. So, it, it sounds like some of us are raising the question, or a number of us, can, can we make the Twilight program a little bit better, whether it's earlier in the day, but, but we, we've heard electronic means raised, and so, would, would we have an online component to that, so that the, and I don't want to make it punitive, but the idea of them all going to breakfast and hanging out, it doesn't seem to be a great use of their day, though it sounds fun. But with, with, the fact that we literally can have an online component, that we're, that we're getting better at, better at designing and running online classrooms, and this could be part of it, so...
A requirement, as opposed to...
Yeah.
Agree?
Just a thought.
I'm happy to bring a recommendation like that after consultation with Tradesco and our high school teams. It's sometimes hard to choose the external online component, because it doesn't lockstep with our curriculum, but I agree with you, we're getting better and better at doing some of our own work, we have some of our own courses that are online, so there may be another way to do it, and we can certainly look at a Twilight component that's not two-thirty, in fact, a nine o'clock Twilight component might actually work better for us, just in terms of the logistics of transportation.
Can I ask a question? I guess I never thought about the differences, and I'm going to just use athletics as an example, and I'm sure it's bigger and broader, but the difference in, in terms of those codes of conduct among various coaches, because now I'm thinking back to, I want to say it was several years ago, but I'm thinking back to, well, the boys on the baseball team were allowed to do X, Y, and Z over this period of time, but the cheerleaders, or whatever the groups were, is there, I mean, is there value...
It's always unfortunately about the cheerleader, Jeff.
Is there, is there some value in looking at that, in terms of uniformity across the district, or, or does that take away the flexibility that the coaching staff has to work with their teams as a team?
I think, Sonny, we're, we're dealing with the overarching policy of District 218, and, and I think administrators do their best to fully implement that, the consequences, and even if this policy were to be amended in any way, we still want to make sure, we're always looking out for the care, welfare, safety, and security of the students, whether they're athletes or not. I do think that depending on what program the student is involved in, how heavily involved they are in that program, I don't know if I would want to take away the coach's discretion in terms of how they like sanction, and how they impact their individual team. I certainly don't want to weigh in, because I'm not with that team every day, I don't know the impact of how these infractions might, I mean, a lot of it's confidential, too, so, you know, how much of that actually gets out, I'm not sure. But I'm comfortable kind of leaning into the coach's discretion. I don't think it's something where they're actually not going to get over the policies.
But the coach, sorry, the coach's discretion is boxed this far, it, it means that that coach may, after populating a policy with his athletes, may take away playing time or whatever. The coach is certainly not going to refer us to it for a violation of policy to eighteen point three, because we won't do that, and we've already made that very clear to our coaches.
No, but, you know, it's interesting, because a coach, I'm, I'm thinking about, and I, I have to look at the write-ups, because I believe some of the coaches, if they find out, we talked about the difference between parties, you know, but when someone has a party, and there's alcohol in the party, and the police show up at the party, has nothing to do with the school, and the kid gets picked up, some of the coaches, I believe, have a, you know, in their agreement with the students, says that if that kid gets picked up in that, it goes to the, to the ethics or the, the behavior, what, what you use the term for... Code of Conduct. That those kids may be sitting on the bench. So, you know, while we don't overtly solicit that information from the police department, when it gets back to the coaches, I believe the Code of Conduct agreements, and I'd like to, I, as a board member, I'd like to see some of those templates. I, I think the coaches impose restrictions on those students, and...
I would be surprised if many of those exist anymore. We had that pretty strong conversation with our coaches, after the board had that conversation five to six years ago. But whether they do or not, my hope is that if a kid's sitting on the bench after an altercation on a Saturday night, that the parent is saying, I agree with that.
I would hope.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you go back, I'm not sure how many years ago, but if you go back when Mr. No Decker was our athletic director at North, this is one of his specialties, he really strongly about athletic codes, I don't know if you remember that.
I do remember that.
And we, we worked on it, we worked on it, we had a lot of conversations, and we went through it, but I think there's a lot of legalities with that, and I think that that's basically what happened with, that, you know, expecting behaviors outside of school, and what happens outside of school because of privacy laws, you know, many times things happen in the community that we are not aware of because of privacy laws.
And I want to be clear, that's, I, I'm sorry, Jerry, that's not where I was going. I, I just wonder if it might not be simpler to have something uniform across the district? I'm not, I certainly don't want, what happens on a Saturday night, that's my responsibility as a parent, in my opinion. I personally don't want any coach in the way, any administrator or teacher in the way, unless there is danger and harm involved, and I need that stuff, so I'm, I'm not looking for that type of...
But I think, I think it was really because of the difference, you're, you're taking your athletes, and the athlete has to be at a higher standard than the rest of the students, and I think that that's where...
Well, yeah, I would speak to any extracurricular, any or all extracurricular.
It wasn't just athletes, it was music band, those kinds of places, too.
Yeah, I...
We, we do have a, we did establish a uniform co-curricular statement that parents and students sign off on for all co-curricular activities. I won't tell you that some of the leeway that's granted to coaches is exclusive, because they do, it does say that the, the students agree to abide by all the policies, rules, regulations of the district, the school, and the program. So, programs do, most of those, from my understanding, are things like getting a detention and missing a, a practice, and what would be the result? You'd probably see a greater difference in how a coach would handle something like that versus a student who violated the alcohol policy in a non-school-related issue, and whether or not there would be significant impact with their participation in our co-curricular program. We tried to, that's the reason for building that policy, was we tried to rein that in so that we weren't seeing the, the vast array of disciplinary action taken by our coaches.
First, let's see if I can integrate some of the discussion that we had, but in discussing whether or not we want to change this policy, I think the first thing we have to look at is the purpose of the policy, which is set out in the first paragraph, which states in part, as an, as an educational institution of this district, the schools should strive to prevent abuse of controlled substances. I don't see much in this policy, other than the possible deterrent effect that will prevent abuse of controlled substances, other than the intervention and the recommendations of the CARES team. And that I know precious little about with regard to what recommendations they make that need to be complied with before a student is returned to school. Sure, they sit on expulsion hearings, and that's as far as it goes, and a kid's expelled, when he comes back, I don't really know what the CARES team recommended. So, if we're going to be true to this purpose of the policy, which is to prevent abuse of controlled substances, we have to go beyond the deterrent effect. And when do you believe the policy has basically its core purpose to be a deterrent effect? Others will say it's so severe that it's punitive, it's, it's just a punishment, regardless of the effect it has, the deterrent effect it has.
I think they agree that it's still deterrent, but it's excessive for those who get caught.
I don't know, so some would think that...
It's not a deterrent?
I would think some would say it's not going to be a deterrent. Kids are going to do what they're going to do, and if they get caught, they get caught, if they don't...
So, is that a reason to make it five rather than forty-five? I mean, that's the problem, is the continuum ranges from very minimal to relatively severe.
Right, and I'm not recommending any change of this, I'm not, I'm just stating that maybe we can help our kids a little more. So, now I'm thinking, okay, do we want to differentiate between a child who truly needs rehabilitation, who has a problem with drugs or alcohol, as opposed to a child who, like you said, Mr. Klein, just did a bad act? So, do we want to have a disparate impact or treatment of individuals or children based on the level that we see of the need of intervention, whether they're just doing a bad act, or they have an addiction problem?
How do we tell?
I, well, can I ask Mr., I think you have an answer to that, I'll let Mr. Funk talk about it, he's a former member of CARES.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I have an answer to how you make that, how you distinguish. I mean, I think the very nature of an addiction or dealing with controlled substances, there's a certain sense of denial there, so where you kind of cross over the line to you're just experimenting, and it was just an honest impulsive teenage mistake, versus we have a real issue, that's a tough one for me. In reference to the CARES piece that you spoke of, each, each student will be mandated to participate in the CARES process, so what that means is that they would take an assessment through Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Dependence Group. Now, that group, that assessment is confidential to the parents and to the student, so they don't have to share the results with the school. They may in fact share the results, and the results may be, you need to go to treatment, and that treatment could range from, you know, once-a-week consultation to in-house treatment. Those are the things that happen in the CARES program. So, our degree of involvement, in terms of with our CARES coordinator and different school members of the CARES team, is really dependent on whether the family wishes us to be involved in that, and if we are involved, then there's, there's different council components and different services involved.
So, before a student is, before a student is returned to school, how do we know that student successfully completed the recommendations of the...
We don't know if they completed the recommendations, we know that they took the assessment.
And then our CARES team still picks up with them. We, we still have our in-school piece, but we aren't entitled to know what the Bucks County Drug and Alcohol system does when they do their assessment.
Right.
With one exception, and the, one exception I would offer is, that if you are in possession of a controlled substance, not alcohol, which would probably be a, a summary offense for underage drinking, those possession issues come with a stiffer penalty with respect to the police, and often will place a child in juvenile probation, which then has a whole canopy of, as you well know, interventions and responsibilities for the student.
But that's not the school, and I want to be very careful, that, that, that aspect, a lot of those things that we talk about here, you know, they used to, they used to be, you used to watch the old gangster movies, people would talk about, you know, serving their time, standing on their head, you know, they'd go to jail, they'd serve their time, come out recidivist, you know, they, they didn't do anything, they just came out, and, and there's an aspect here that says, you know, we can say everything we want, if we expel someone for forty-five days, and they come back, are we allowed to put all sorts of conditions on their return, that they have to do this and that? Our policy says that you're out for forty-five days, and if you, like the gangsters in the old movies, do it standing on your head and come back, you know, I, I think we have more cooperation from parents than that, but we, we sometimes sit here and talk about layering on, you know, well, they have to test, clean drug tests, that's not the policy.
And we don't have that.
Except, well, we did in our, in our, in our waivers, we had probation, which, which, did we get that out of our waivers?
That's out.
That's gone? Because I didn't know what that was.
The, the, one thing I, I would say, because it's a legal issue, the, the school district's authority, express authority, is actually pretty, pretty limited. The school district has to, the board has to, if it's going to expel a student for more than ten days, make a determination as to whether the student committed the offense, whether, whether the student violated the policy, and then impose a punishment after giving notice and hearing to the student if, if the recommendation is for an expulsion greater than ten days. That's, the, the school district is required to do that, and so, it's right to do that is crystal clear. The further you get away from that, though, the, the, the less clear the district's authority is. And, and so, can you impose certain requirements after, after notice and hearing, such as drug tests, or community service, or some other thing that the student has to go through? Maybe, but it's not as clear as just simply excluding them from school. Two, two other points I, I would make, and, and this is a lively policy discussion that doesn't really need to, to get muddled with a lot of unnecessary legal issues, but I, I would say that I have some experience with some other school districts, and you're, the, the way it works here is really, is really quite good, in my experience. I think everyone has notice as to what the policy is, the policy clearly, as it is right now, is, is clearly lawful. Students and families are on notice of what it says and what's required of them. And then the other thing that happens frequently here, which really, I think, is of benefit to the district, is that a lot of these cases are resolved between the administration and the families, in, in a way where everyone feels as though the outcome was fair and relatively decent. And the other thing that happens with those resolutions between the administration and families, is that the families are agreeing, essentially, to whatever measure of discipline is, is being imposed. And so, in that scenario, the school district has a much greater right to impose something other than just an exclusion from school, such as community service, or some other requirement that the student has to go through, because the student and his family are agreeing...
Greater ability, not a greater right, they have greater ability. It's not a right. The district doesn't have the right to impose it, the parents give the ability to...
Well, I, maybe that's a better, a more accurate way of saying it, but I, but my point is that the district probably has a, a, a clearer ability to do those kinds of things when the administration has reached an agreement with the family, then the board would have following a hearing.
Well, Rob, I think you make an interesting point, which, which actually only occurred to me now as you were speaking about the process. We look at a number of neighboring districts that have five-day, ten-day suspension for the same thing that we expelled for, were expelled for, for forty-five days, and I think that while the administration does work with people around waivers and to, to get this and to get the waiver of the hearing and move forward, the, the other part about this is, and I don't mean to cast aspersions upon other boards, but this board stands ready to, to go to the hearing at, at a moment's notice, to, to have the hearings and to sit through them, and to adjudicate them, to, to weigh them. Other boards, you know, if you, if you make a ten-day policy, that's a ten-day expulsion for, for anything, that board never has to deal with it, that never has to come to the board level. That, that child can be expelled and resolved. That child can be expelled and resolved, never has to notify the board, doesn't place any imposition on the board. So I say it, and try not to break my arm patting ourselves on the back, but part of the reason the process works, too, is that this board is willing to stand there and commit to hearing and being connected with what's going on when something happens.
Rick, I want to, I'm sorry, just to address that prevention issue very quickly. I don't disagree that our fundamental role, both in, you know, collaboration with coalition and in working with our kids, is to try to make sure the kids stay away from these dangerous decisions. And within the four corners of the school, we do. But I don't want to minimize this other rule. When the kids go to Twilight, they get an hour, four days a week, of counseling with our, with one of our counselors. And that, I think that is, again, to the extent that we can take some responsibility for this, because we're in partnership with parents to help. And as has been often mentioned, this is sometimes a wake-up call, Mom and Dad, too, that they didn't realize some of this stuff was going on. It does give us an opportunity to bend and to get some work done with kids. We can't always follow up on some of the outside resources that we see from the assessors, but oftentimes we do. And oftentimes, that information comes full in front of the CARES team because the parents are working in collaboration with us to get the kid into a better place. But I don't want to minimize that. I think that is absolutely, at its core, the most important thing that we need to do.
Let me ask you a question here, which is, so, I'm just, I think the conversation's all good and valid, but let me walk, look around the table for a second and say, so is there any notion among the members here tonight to reduce the stated forty-five? Is there any thought to entertain that? Is there any among the board members here to reduce the period of expulsion from forty-five, initially just as a straight reduction from that to some lower number with no other changes?
Respectfully, before you poll the board, I was going to say, I want to hear from Mrs. Thomas if there's another question we can answer. My apologies.
No, there's not another question you can answer, but before people vote on it, because...
I'm not voting, I'm just looking.
Not vote, give an opinion, whatever. I happened to overhear about five years ago, a teenager from a neighboring school district and a child I might be related to, discussing the penalties that might happen for consuming alcohol. That child's district was ten days. And that child was like, oh, it's great! We get out for ten days! It was a complete joke. My child's version was that we basically chained them to a wall somewhere at Twilight and beat them. I mean, he thought it was very extreme. But, you know, I'm just going to share that I could never go down to ten days. I think the kids look at it as a little vacation and a joke. And for me, part of this is about being a deterrent. I think the pun, I'm off for making Twilight better, but I think the forty-five days works. I don't think it's comfortable. I think it's a hardship on families. I don't think it's easy. I don't think it's easy on the kids. I don't think it's academically easy. I don't think it's perfect. But I think it's a huge deterrent, from what I see, and I think the kids take it seriously for the most part. If we can provide some stronger things academically, if we can look for some other ways to help in that area. But I also don't think it shouldn't be painful for the student or the family. It's breaking a rule. And, you know, that's my opinion. We've had a lot of feedback this year from parents who felt significantly, that it was significantly over the top. And I think it's good to have the conversation and weigh that out. And perhaps there's some things we can do to address the true academic issues and their feelings like it was too harsh. And there's some better ways. But the actual penalty for exhibiting the behavior, I believe, has served this district well.
And I want to state for the record that we received a very lengthy and very articulate email from a parent tonight that I made available to all of the board members. That certainly echoes that comment about concern about this policy.
We've been talking about, you know, ten days, forty-five days, but it's been mentioned before that there's a difference between the suspension and the expulsion. Hopefully, the community will know that. The ten days is suspension, and as opposed to, more than that could be an expulsion, with this different rights available to the students and the parents.
So I'm just trying to, in the interest of drawing to some conclusions, absent any other change, is there, just someone arbitrarily to say, it's forty-five now? I don't think I'm hearing anybody here on this board say, let's make it forty or thirty-five, just absent any other change. It's just reduce the number. Is anybody interested in doing that?
No, but I would say...
I was getting to your next part.
Okay.
Because I'm asking the question progressively, intentionally. And so I guess the second part of the question then is...
Can I just be sure that I get a send from every board member? Dr. Foster, you agree with that, that forty-five days is...
You know, I agree with the comments made by Mrs. Thomas, that, you know, maybe we can do things better academically. We should look into it, but the forty-five days is fine.
And I think what Mr. Block was looking for, what I was trying to get to the next point, was to say, does anybody have a feeling that there's some aspect of, there was a discussion earlier in the conversation about a trade-off of almost choosing your poison, if you will, that it's forty-five days straight out? Or it's some other unit of time, or some other unit of exclusion? You know, picking one that says, well, you know, it's ninety days of after-school dis, I'm making it up, you know, ninety days of after-school suspension, you know, but you still get to go to school, or, and you're still excluded. Does anybody interested in crafting anything else that is more valid?
Yeah, that's where I was going, and this was about, we all agree with deterrent. I, you know, make no mistake. I want to have the biggest deterrent out there, and I want there to be real consequences for bad behavior. I don't want to have unintended consequences happen to good kids who made a bad decision. And I believe, and I don't know what they are, and I didn't say this in the beginning, we make the policy. It's great to have you guys here. You guys make a real difference in these kids' lives because you're dealing with it every single day. So we appreciate that, and that's why your feedback is valuable. But I'd be interested in knowing, from you and your team, is there an alternative deterrent that is that big or even bigger that may incorporate some essence of exclusion? Or it might not, but would still provide that big deterrent that would solve that academic piece? I'm not necessarily in favor of moving Twilight or expanding it. I think, although that might be an option, that makes more sense than others. But I challenge you guys to be interested in hearing back what the alternatives might be to keep these kids, you know...
Bring that back and brainstorm. I want to be careful, because one aspect that I think is dangerous, and I don't mean this in any negative way, but when someone says, well, let's just take kids out of co-curriculars for ninety days. In some cases, co-curriculars are the absolute lifeline for a kid to school. You know, it gets them into school. The academic day is important, but the co-curricular. And I'm not just talking about athletics. I'm talking about band, I'm talking about other kinds of things, drama, that really make a difference for kids. So when we brainstorm this, I just want to be careful that, I wouldn't support among our team forty-five-day co-curricular expulsion or something like that. I think those things come part and parcel with the experience, although agreed, they're the privileged part of what we offer, not the mandatory...
And that's why I'd like to hear, because you guys are the experts. You deal with it. Is it some combination of community service?
We can go look outside, too.
Community punishment after school. You know, we all understand that there's realities of cost and what we can deliver, and where do the parents play a role in that? But again, big deterrent that's got minimal impact on the academic and the social basis.
But for me, it has to be a deterrent that everybody can have the choice. Not every kid's in extracurriculars. That couldn't be a choice, because that's not, or it can't be something that would put the financial burden on the family in any way. So those would be, it has to just be a choice that, and I'm not even saying I think I may be in favor of a choice or not in a choice. I think if that choice is at the administrative level, but then, I know you're going to tell me we do things arbitrarily. So I don't know, it'd be an interesting conversation, though. It's an interesting thought, but I just want to make sure it has to be available for every student.
See, I'm not, I'm leery of the choice. And I'll give you, and I'll make up an example, just because it illustrates. Imagine if you, that would be absurd, please. I'm not recommending this, I'm just, it's logical extreme. So instead of, you know, it's ninety days of after-school detention. First of all, it almost becomes unworkable. But if that says the kid can still...
And expensive.
I know, that the kid can still compete in sports, then I've lost the point. Because I think that the whole, the point of the exclusion, you know, it's, you know, again, I'm calling Patty a lot tonight. Rip the Bandit off. It's what it is, do it, get it over and be done with it. But now we come to the question, which talks to mitigating factors, which is, are there mitigating factors? And do we, as a board, permit, and I think we do, some discretion? The policy is up to forty-five days. We've never really espoused what the mitigating factors are that would reduce that. I spoke to it before, because I spoke to it about a life safety aspect. Maybe that's a mitigating factor, and it happens. I don't think we can craft what all of them would be and how it would all happen. The other thing we can't craft into it is, we can't craft into it children with exceptionalities. Because for children with exceptionalities, they may, you know, good. Children with exceptionalities, who are, have some special educational requirement within them, sometimes a special educational requirement has nothing to do with their behavior. Their behavior goes right down the path, and the kid with an orthopedic disability, who has a, who has special education, has just committed the same offense that the other kids do, but because of the exceptionality. I think we have to acknowledge, and sit here and say it, which is, there is some leeway in the recommendation of the administration to us. I just want to put it on the record, because it's just reality.
The policy states that.
We have to acknowledge it happens.
It's not, the policy, the policy, wait a second. The policy is not up to forty-five days. Board can exceed forty-five days. It's only the recommendation from the administrator. In an expulsion hearing, the board, correct me if I'm wrong, the board can go over forty-five days. Furthermore, for a second offense, it's, the recommendation from the administration would be one year.
To be really clear, child over, just put this, I think, and, Rob, look virtually at Rob for the confirmation of this. Truthfully, if we expel a child who's over seventeen or older, any expulsion can be a permanent exclusion from school. That is within the domain of the district at all times.
The district's obligation to educate the student stops if they are beyond that age. That's correct. But this school district nonetheless offers the Twilight program as a matter of policy, my understanding.
Correct, but it can be a permanent exclusion if the child is seventeen. So for juniors and seniors, it's a real dangerous road to home.
The, the alcohol regulation states that students who are under seventeen years of age are still subject to compulsory school attendance law. So initially, following an exclusion for a kid who's under the age of seventeen, the obligation is on the parents to find an alternative means of education for that student. But it always reverts back to the school district anyway for a kid younger than that age, if the parents unable to find an alternative means. I wanted to address Mr. Abramson's point. I think that although the policy says that the forty-five-day expulsion is a recommendation of the administration, what I have suggested to committees that I've presided with is that there is some issue of due notice to families if you exceed that number of days. So in theory, while a board could go beyond that forty-five-day expulsion, there is some issue of notice, because the policy, the policy refers to, refers to that forty-five-day period. Maybe that's one thing that, I think we discussed that this morning, you and I did, yes. I think Mr. Gamble would...
I just would like to make a couple of comments. The first comment I would like to make would be, just so the public is aware of the fact that we do not have in-school suspension. So if somebody is thinking, well, why don't we just have these, you know, students put into in-school suspension? We do not run that program currently. And then the second point I'd like to make is, you know, when we meet with the parents, many, many times, you know, these are gut-wrenching meetings over these issues. And for mitigating circumstances, I just want everybody to understand, the first thing that we hear is, you know, why is this happening? My kid is a good kid, okay? Not a bad kid, a good kid. So you get into the mitigating circumstances, I think, because some people think there's a difference between punishments for good kids and bad kids. And I certainly would not want to make a decision like that as an administrator. So I just wanted to let you know that. Should be uniform.
Right, we've tried not to accept an extraordinary case as exercise this question here. It's forty-five days for that kind of infraction.
Yeah, so, you know, for me, I would agree, you know, that we would not provide necessarily a choice or areas of discretion. But the options I'd be open to wouldn't be no expulsion in lieu of something else. It might be a combination of a much shorter, again, back to, you know, not harming the academic piece, but, you know, I'm open to any suggestion that has any combination of things that are at your disposal.
I've got to say, it's been a great conversation. And I, there's been some things that I think I've heard that I hadn't thought about before, that we can go back to our team and at least come back and say, maybe there's some tweaks here and there that we're willing to do. We stand strongly behind that forty-five days. We think it continues to act, not only as a deterrent, but in the interventions that are there, that preventive piece is part of the preamble of that policy. It's not perfect, and we can't do it alone. There's nothing that we do in school that exists in isolation from what Mom and Dad and parents and community can do to help a child who is going through some form of, sort of addiction, or is just, you know, not using alcohol well. And illegally, in all these situations, too. You know, it's, it becomes kind of an accepted manner that our kids are drinking. But that's the bottom line for all of these situations is we have to first and foremost understand every kid in our high school is not permitted to drink by law. So those are some of the things we have to keep in mind. We only are one facet of a multifaceted issue.
One more comment I wanted to make. I talked to Mr. Klein earlier today. I asked a question about the tobacco policy. And I asked what kind of infraction rate we had there, and I was thrilled to hear that it was next to none. So that was terrific.
Do you remember the last time we had a discipline for tobacco?
Yeah, well, believe it or not, something's become popular, right?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm going to eat cigarettes, is that where? So I'd love that to be considered as part of the policy.
At my school, we've had chewing tobacco issue. We've had some infractions.
Your comment about e-cigarettes is right on, because that's become a big issue with us now. So, or at least not a big issue, but an emerging issue, something that we've not obviously seen. Technology hasn't been there, but something we probably do need to address in policy.
Well, actually, you know, it's interesting, because you have to think of, I think you already covered the policy. You already covered it, because the e-cigarettes use a compound as the basis. It's not water vapor. It's actually a, Bill, was it, it's carrying nicotine?
Yeah, I don't know what the carrier is.
Yeah, but it's, but it's, I don't know what the carrier is, but the payload is nicotine. So they're already carrying a drug to school. So it's already covered, it's already covered under the drug and alcohol policy in terms of the solution you put into the e-cigarette is already covered.
Can I just make one other statement? I think one of the things I heard last fall from several parents is they, as parents, we drill this into the kids at the beginning of every school year, and that they, as parents, had no idea that the policy was what the policy was. I don't know that-
You can absolutely expect, although we heard some feedback last meeting, that listserv doesn't necessarily cover everybody that should see it. But we will go through that in the beginning of the school year in listserv format for every parent. Because in addition to that, the reason that, I think, would be effective is not only would it hit our high school parents, it'll hit our elementary parents. And as long as the policy stays relatively the same, it's a precursor for our grade school parents to understand this is the consequence when kids hit middle school and high school.
Matt, sorry to pull you into this, but in the, you know, in the world of online access, oftentimes when you go to use something, there's an end-user license that you love, which is typically long. Everybody just clicks it and moves along through. And I wonder if, in part of our home access center, if there's a capacity to put up, I don't want to put an end-user license agreement, but if there's some aspect of putting up, starting now, you know, all IDs get reset that say, "All parental IDs need to click off on these checkboxes that say, 'I've read and understand.'" Because at some point, all those parents will have, not all parents, but most parents, I think, at some point get into the home access system. How do we, I hear your point, Mark, about listserv and everything else, but this means I'll have a record.
Well, we have a parent handbook that goes out to every district. And if we had some way of acknowledgement when that parent handbook went out, that might be-
But on the, as a front end that says, "Click here to move forward." They have to, like an end-user license agreement.
I'm not opposed that we could do it, but I don't imagine why we couldn't. So all of it would, you know.
If you support the idea, Mark, if that's just a notion, then-
As long as it doesn't burden what Matt's crew does. I mean, I think we could send out a parent handbook and just say, you know, "Acknowledge that you've received inter- I don't see that as a problem." I think most parents are conversant about the issues in the handbook that deal from attendance issues all the way down to drug and alcohol policy.
They won't acknowledge it. This was, this is the entryway to get to the tool they want to use that's behind the sign-on.
I would say that in, again, 10 years of administration, I can count on one hand the number of parents who have said to us, "I didn't know." And I can't think of a kid that said that. So I think we've done a pretty good job with that. And if the parent didn't know, the kid's saying to their parents, "Yeah, this is 45 days. We knew that."
We also have, the first time they log on to the system beginning of school year, they have to acknowledge that they've read the accepted use policy.
As the child?
The student does.
As a student.
Every student has to do it.
So it's the same notion. I'm just looking to put that at the parental access as well.
But we, just, again, I'm sorry to keep belaboring this, but I just want the community to understand this. Every student in our high school goes to an assembly program in the beginning of the school year in September. Every student sits there in, not as one big 2000s, but as groups of 2, 300. They stand there and listen to Susan McCarthy, Al Gamble, Al Funk, Lynn Carriola. They go over these policies, point by point by point with them. We don't rely on them just to read their handbook. We go over this from top to bottom with the handbook so the kids know. There's nobody that leaves those things. And I think we even have provisions for kids that are absent that day, don't we? Yeah, so there's no one that leaves the high school.
It wasn't the kids. The comment was, it was the family, so.
Right, but I mean, there's been some intimation that kids might not have known. I think with respect to the mom and dad, that's a possibility. With respect to the kid, it's very unlikely. And I've not heard any kid come and tell us that.
All right, so for this discussion, we have another item.
And with my apologies, maybe Mr. Grup, I'll ask you to make the, like you used to do the, because I noticed that we don't have an agenda, motion on the agenda for this personnel action.
I'll move to approve, I'll move to approve the personnel action that's included in our agenda this evening.
Second.
This is for authorization for a new second-grade position in Salfine Stone after some very significant enrollment increases in that position, that grade level this year.
What will this drive the class, what would the class size be without this position?
Twenty-seven to 21.5.
So we're gonna add one section to which grade? And how many sections will we have? And so we'll go from three to four?
We'll go from four to five.
Four to five. So 27 to 21.5. I think the important notion about this, which I just take a moment to talk about, is, you know, when you're starting to split four to five and five to six, it doesn't drive down class size to an untenable level. What happens, though, is when you start splitting ones to twos and twos to threes, you get class sizes which are just so small as to be almost unsupportable for financial and fiscal responsibility. So this, I don't have a big girl with this one. Is there a second?
Yes, Mr. Buck. Seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing no objection, I ask the television camera to record the motion as passing by unanimous consent. So we don't have a secretary.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment. Public comment's an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We'd ask you to limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children watching this on TR TV. It is your opportunity to address the board without interruption. And if you'd please state your name and your town.
Margaret Shabaski, Newtown Township. I come before you as a parent whose child was suspended. So if you guys have any questions, you asked a lot of questions of the staff, but from a parent's point of view. Happened in 2006, so I'm way, way beyond it. It's already, I mean, as far as the Twilight School, I'm assuming it's improved over the years.
I hope that every year gets a little better.
It does get a little, I mean, my experience with the Twilight School, it was difficult for her to go that late in the day. There is no, there was no real education there. There was counseling that did help. The counseling was a good part of it. The education was one teacher for a multiple facet of kids who were at all different levels. And if you were lucky enough that you had a teacher who cared about you passing, you got your work and you got it done. Otherwise, there really wasn't any. Some of the teachers that she had were wonderful, emailed her every day, got her grades back to her. And others just weren't responsive. But that was, like I said, a while back. So I hopefully improved.
I think that might have been the first year we had that suspension.
I believe it was, yes.
So I would hope that we're better with it. But I do understand, it took us a while to coordinate that effort between school and teacher.
Right, that would be my biggest concern about the 45-day suspension is you really do take education away from the kids who may need it the most. And I do ask you to consider some alternative that ensures that they are getting their education. That was the most difficult part about the suspension is getting tutors, getting her to the Twilight and maybe getting anything out of that day and getting anything back from the teachers. That was really, really difficult. But, thank you. I'm trying to think what else was there that was, as far as suggestions for a parent's knowing. I think we've definitely done a better job as parents seem to know more about the 45-day rule. If you are thinking about putting it on the website, I would ask that you, instead of just, like we do with any website, we just check off, "I accept." You don't read anything. And I realize they have the assembly, but, sorry to say, they're kids, they don't pay attention. Maybe you want to do what FAFSA does. Make you take the quiz that makes you understand what you're signing up for, that you know everything. I know that would be a heartache on the IT department, but if you're really trying to get a certain message out there, that's certainly the better way to do it. Let's see, what else did I want to say? The, as far as reducing and maybe having other options, any counseling that you're able to provide for these kids at this point, even, and they're all good kids. I mean, all of them were good kids. All these kids went on, went to college